This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to open the Howard's Board of Selectments meeting for December 14, 2020, and start by asking you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Joe, you said you had a flag.
Yeah, let me just get that back. Of course, I didn't get it back up there.
And this is tricky to do this anywhere near being synchronized, but we'll do our, here we go. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, justic, and for all. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move next to weekly briefing.
As a veteran, folks, I appreciate that very, very much.
You're very welcome. It's our, it's our pleasure. Joe, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Quite a bit of information to share and talk about this evening as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic. And as you'll hear shortly, you know, as we now know through broadcast messages through our health director, which has been determined to be a high-risk community. And what that means practically for town staff is Megan and I, along with Katie, Katie Tenali O'Neill, had to participate or got to participate, I should say, in a COVID-19 enforcement and intervention team presentation. What that basically means is it's various state agencies, representatives of the various secretariates, and they go through a number of slides telling everybody what sort of support towns that have identified as high-risk can expect. I will take a moment to say that unfortunately, one of the things they did not say that high-risk communities on Cape Cod and all communities on Cape Cod could rely upon is a stop-the-spread site. As the board members may know, the state has established 23 such sites. It allows for quick and easy testing that's of no charge and no requirement, if you will. Again, there are 23 sites, but there are none in Barnstable County. I did put a message out there to the group, but unfortunately, nobody from Department of Public Health weighed in. I did follow up with the main presenter, and he indicated that he would send the concerns along to Secretary Sutters and others. But very disappointing that Cape Cod can't rely upon one of those sites at this time because it's clearly what is needed throughout the Commonwealth. And I think it's indefensible that Cape Cod is not represented with one of those sites. Separately from my update, I will tell you that the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission sent out an advisory to establishments last week. And this is following up on Governor Baker's order regarding now being in Phase Three Step One. I won't go through the particulars here, but just let the board know that the establishments have been made aware of that, and that would be any liquor license establishments. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, unless there's questions for me, I'll turn it directly over to Megan for the public health update.
Joe, I have one. My understanding was that we're going to open a stop-the-spread site in Hyannis. That's no longer taking, that's not happening?
My understanding is they've identified test sites, but not specifically a stop-the-spread site. And what that gets to is it's
The difference is, is that not restricted?
Say again?
The test site, the difference is a test site, you need a medical condition and pay for it. Is that it?
I'll defer to Megan on that stuff.
Barnstable County has identified three sites in conjunction with Cape Cod Healthcare and Outer Cape Health. And they're not exactly stop-the-spread sites because you do need an appointment to go. So you'd need an appointment to go, not necessarily a doctor's order or a prescription to go. And you don't need to have symptoms, so you could go asymptomatic, but you do need an appointment. And they're not free. They're free if you have insurance. If you don't have insurance, they will fill on a sliding scale. So it will be much less expensive than having to go to an ERGIE center for a test. They're thinking in the lines of like between $30 and $50 per a test rather than the $150, $160 that it costs right now to get an outpatient test without a prescription. And the sites are going to be at the fairground in Falmouth. The Melody Tent in that one, there should be a press release coming out either, it could have even come out today. And that one is supposedly going to be open seven days a week. And then Outer Cape Health is opening up a site to this side of the Cape on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And from what I've been told, it's either going to be in Harwich, Wellfleet, or Provincetown. They may just rotate between the three areas depending on the need. But they're not, stop-the-spread sites are great because you can just drive in, hand them your license, and they give you a test. You tell them like your phone number is, and you do the test and drive away without, without any symptoms, without an appointment, and it's just really simple. So these sites are wonderful, these new ones that are coming down to Barnstable County. And we definitely thank Barnstable County for acquiring this, the grant money for this and the money from the delegations. But they're just, they're not exactly stop-the-spread sites.
Larry and Megan, if I could jump in, just when you were speaking, Megan, a press release did come up from Senator Sears' office. And they've announced that the hours of operation and location for the testing sites are as follows. So as you said, the Cape Cod Melody Tent in Hyannis, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., started today. This weekend, Saturday and Sunday, they'll be 8:00 a.m. to noon, starting on the 19th. And then the county fairgrounds in Falmouth, Tuesdays and Wednesdays only, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting tomorrow. So that just came out.
Great. And there's most likely a phone number that you have to call to make an appointment. And we'll get all that information up on our website as soon as I get a hold of it. So Larry, I can continue on with the plethora of information I have to share with you this week. Okay.
Yes.
As Joe said, we have been turned to a red community or a high-risk community. And that means that we have a positivity rate of over 5%. And we have more than 25 positive cases within a two-week period. And right now, Harwich has a positivity rate of 5.21. And in the last data period, which was last Saturday, in the two Saturdays prior to that, we had 48 new cases in that two-week period. So we're almost twice as many cases that bump us into the red designation. And a positivity rate, just to go over that again, it's not a positivity rate of our entire population. It's a positivity rate of the number of people who got a test from Harwich. So over that two-week period, we had 921 residents get tested for COVID-19, and 48 of those were positive. So it's a percentage of the number of tests, not the percentage of the population. So that's important to note. It's most likely that our population percentage is a little higher than that, most likely, because not everybody who's positive gets tested. Some people assume they're positive and quarantined, and some people don't even know they're positive. So that's what pushed us into the red. We are red along with Darmouth and Barnstable right now. So those, unfortunately, three towns on the Cape are the high-risk communities right now. It's not a designation that we like to have at all. Looking through our cases, they vary from where we believe they came from. Most have a household connection. So we have right now 36 active cases, and half of those live in the same household. So if we extrapolate out, we have 18 unrelated cases. And some of those are just household spread. Some of them are healthcare workers. Some of them got it from a daycare. Some of them get it from after-school activities and bring it home. We have kind of a spread of where we're getting it from. So it's important for the community to know that it's, we're high-risk. And if you're doing any extracurricular activities or you're meeting with friends and increasing your social circle, be aware that even a small symptom like a headache can be a symptom of COVID. And even though you may think a headache's no big deal, I'll take that. Depends on who you bring it home to. So that's what we worry about there. Not in this report is what happened over the weekend. We had 10 new cases over the weekend, and five of them were high, Monomoy Regional School kids, three in the middle school, two in the high school. And if anyone has kids, they have been told that the seventh grade has gone remote. And it's not because of a danger within the school system there. It's just those three kids in the middle school were threw out a few different classrooms where teachers needed to quarantine. And they didn't have the staff to maintain in-person class, so they went remote. That, sort of the same thing in the high school, they decided to do remote until the end of the year, mostly because that case is still evolving, and we have not contacted all of the close contacts. Excuse me. So we wanted to make sure we weren't spreading anything in school. So we had some meetings over the weekend and decided that going fully remote for the rest of the calendar year was the best move for that. Other things in this report that is in your packet. Cape Cod hospitals, both Falmouth and Hyannis, right now have a total of 37 hospitalizations. And of those, there's eight in the ICU. So that is an increase of 10 over the last four days as well. So we're seeing not only
The other major
people in mild symptoms, but we are seeing an increase in the number of people that need hospitals and support like the ICU. Another important announcement is that yesterday, the statewide rollback to Step One of Phase Three went into effect. Governor Baker announced this last week that because of the increase in cases and those needing hospitalizations, our hospital capacity is getting less and less. Those hospitals are filling up, and we've had to open two field hospitals to handle the surge. And because of that, the rollback is in effect. And that brings us back to Step One of Phase Three, which lowers the gatherings to 50 people maximum outside. It used to be 100. And it also reduces a lot of capacities of office buildings to 40%, retail stores 40% instead of 50. So it's, it's limiting the number of people that can gather, even if it's not a party or something like that event. It's just to limit the number of people that can be near each other. The restaurants have not only gone back to Step One of Phase Three, but are under some more strict requirements, limiting their tables back down to six people and no music inside or out, as well as limiting the time at the restaurant to 90 minutes, as well as requiring masks on even if you're seated. Prior to this Sunday, if you went to a restaurant, you could remove your mask once you got seated. Now you've got to keep your mask on unless you're eating or drinking. So that's another restriction on restaurants. All the other rules are in effect still, closing 9:30. And events are limited to 50 people as well, and that's private or public. We, Cape Cod received our first shipment of COVID-19 vaccine. It's at Cape Cod Healthcare. They are vaccinating some of their staff. The vaccine distribution plan is in your packet, and I shared a little bit of this on the robo-call that I put out last week. Phase One is in effect now, and that's for the clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers who are doing direct face-to-face contact with COVID or potential COVID patients. And it will also be available to long-term care facilities and police, fire, EMS. And then when we get into February, when we get more shipments of this, Phase Two will be prioritized in order of people with two or more comorbidities, and those are conditions or diseases that increase your risk to complications from having COVID-19, something like diabetes or lung disease. K through 12 and early education staff will be able to be in Phase Two. And that's really, really nice for all the teachers out there. Grocery store workers, utility workers, public works and public health are all included in Phase Two. And then Phase Three is expected in April, and that will be when the general public will be able to access the vaccine. We will partner with Barnstable County and the VNA to distribute the vaccine when we are able to get it in April. It does require a sub-zero temperature to maintain the vaccine, which is something that not all towns have. So Barnstable County will be storing it for most of the towns on the Cape. They've partnered with Center for Coastal Studies and the Marine Biological Lab down in Falmouth to be able to have the capacity as well as Cape Cod Healthcare. Last thing I wanted to do is just tell people that becoming a high-risk community means it's very, very important to maintain your social distancing, limit your social gatherings, stay at home after 9:30. We live in an area that it's, it's where you least expect it. And sleepovers, playdates, parties, all of these things seem so easy and safe, but spread, the virus spreads very quickly. And it goes from household to household, and it shuts down businesses. It closes schools. It sends people to the hospital. So I would just ask that over the holidays, over the next couple of weeks, people need to stay vigilant about all of these guidance and standards so we can get out of the red. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions or comments, Megan? Thanks as usual, Megan. Joe, back to you.
At this point, we'll turn it over to our library director, Jenny Hewitt, who has similar updates regarding library services based on the high-risk announcement. Jenny?
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me join the meeting so I could let the public know about this change at the library. We decided late last week that we needed to suspend in-person browsing at the library and go back to a curbside-only model. There's a letter in the packet for anyone watching that explains more. But initially, our plan was to implement this on December 21st. So that would give patrons more than a week's notice so that they could come in, you know, and have a chance to talk to us about how to place requests or things like that, that they, it would just be nice to give a notice. But unfortunately, when I worked in the Marine Corps, they used to express, they used to, a term, OBE. This is overcome by events, and that's kind of what happened to us this weekend after we'd made the decision, Harwich went into the red, high-risk category. And then seeing the number of cases over the weekend with the schools that, that impacts some of our staff because they either have children in the school or they, or they have family members who work for the school district. So I was uncertain how much it would affect our staffing as the rest of the week wore on. And, but the other important development over the weekend is that every library in our area that was doing, allowing inside access for patrons stopped that and reverted back to curbside only. And we were meeting regularly with some of our comparable libraries in the towns around us, and we thought we had an agreement that we would all try to do this at the same time. You know, it's like calling a snow day. No one wants to be the first one to do it, and no one wants to be the last one out there. So we had, you know, an informal agreement, but over the weekend, they just shut down without notice. And what that means is if we were open this, for the public this week to come in, we would be the only library from Yarmouth to Provincetown allowing inside access, and we would see our numbers skyrocket, especially if people knew they only had a week to do it. So that, like, one of the major reasons we're suspending inside browsing is that the concern about the number of people coming in every hour, it's been very popular and kind of victim of that popularity. We're not exceeding the 30 people at one time, but we regularly have between 50 and 100 people an hour. And as you know, COVID-19 spreads through aerosols. So having that, a high number of people in a space over a period of time, it's a concern. It was kind of an increasing concern. And we've been open for three months now. And the longer that we've allowed people inside, even with all of the restrictions on what they can do and where they can go, people have acclimated to that, and now it's starting to seem like business as usual. So they're staying longer, and they are, you know, chatting with each other and not maintaining distance like they were, and also, you know, attempting to chat with staff. It's not the business of, business like just coming in to grab something and go, which that was our initial phrase that we used for the service was grab and go. Well, it was turning not to be a grab and go. So that was a concern. And now if being the only library open on the, from the mid-Cape on out, that would just exacerbate that problem. So we decided that, like, just as the town's really entering a critical phase, it seemed like the wrong thing to do. So as of today, we have closed the inside browsing, and we're just open for curbside pickup. I really regret having to change the original plan. We just started putting out publicity on Sunday when we started to hear about what was happening with the, with the school cases. But I do think it's the right call. We, it's disappointing for people. They obviously really like coming in. And I think part of the reason I'm having to change the plan is we're really reluctant to stop providing that service because it is so valuable to people. But we will still have curbside pickup, six days a week, Monday to Saturday, and morning, afternoon, and evening times available. We're going to start something new called book bundles. Basically, we have a curbside pickup. We have bags for each of the patrons that are scheduled outside with their items. We want to have some other bags out there, just five or six items on a theme or a certain genre. And so patrons can just stop by and pick those up. They're not, we'll be on reserve for them. We'll have a system where they let us know what they took so we can check them out. But, so that, that should help. And we also want to really encourage people to give us a call. Some people don't know how to place requests online, or they're, or they, maybe they don't have a particular title in mind. So we will be happy to pick some materials out for you. Give us a call and talk to a staff member about what you'd like to read or watch or listen to. And we'll find some books or audiobooks or movies for you. You know, if you check out six, maybe three have no value to you, but maybe the other three should be something that, you know, you might really enjoy. And, and so you'll have some new reading material. I was going to say, okay, that's, I guess that's about it. I, I know the Board of Trustees have their meeting, annual meeting scheduled with you for next week. So I can provide more info if people want it on any of those services. That's about it, I guess. I don't know if you have any questions.
Jenny, remind people of Clams.
Oh, that they can replace requests online? Yeah, sure. Just go to our website, which is brooksfreelibrary.org, and there's a link there for the Clams catalog. If people don't know their card number, you know, or their PIN number that they need, they can call us. We can reset that for them. We can issue new cards for people, and they can pick it up during curbside pickup. So that's always available. We also have a lot of electronic resources with eBooks and audiobooks and streaming movies for free and online magazines. So if people have any questions about that, there's information on our website, but also, don't be afraid to give us a call. Our number is 508-430-7562. And especially as, you know, we get back into curbside, if this goes on for a while, it will, staff members will really welcome your call because otherwise, we're running a, basically a fulfillment center without a lot of human contact. And, and librarians really miss talking to patrons and trying to match up patrons with what they like to read.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Thanks again, Jenny. Joe, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I'd ask you to recognize the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce for the business update.
Good evening. Hi, Larry and everyone. Just a few things to go over. This is the last week for the Festival of Trees Family Pantry fundraiser. We have already exceeded last year's fundraising amount that we had donated, which was then doubling what they had done the previous year. So everyone is able to still bid with the new rollback. We have taken it to email bids as well as phone calls to me. Everything is current on the Harwich Chamber website, so people can check that daily and then email me what they'd like to bid. Also stressing what Megan had just mentioned, you know, with these new rollbacks and the capacity limits, many of our stores, this is the holiday season, many of our stores do have online shopping available. So please, if you are going to shop online, shop locally and shop Harwich. It's very important that we do still continue to support all of these small businesses. And then we will be updating our website with restaurants who are staying open, what their hours are, what their services, et cetera. So we'll get back to what we had done at the beginning of all of this with a direct link to all the restaurants and such. So again, please, everyone that's listening, please be safe, please be smart, and listen to the guidance that we are given. It's for all, all of our own good. So I hope everyone stays happy and healthy.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions for Cindy? Comments? Thanks again. Joe, anything else from your perspective or?
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I think we've covered everything. Obviously, we'd ask everybody to be on the lookout for updates, either by robo-call or on the website, you know, as we're in this high-risk phase. Otherwise, I think we've covered everything for this evening.
Thank you, Joe. Public comment, I have one, and that is that Jim Hilliard has left our Board of Appeals, and I want to very much thank him for his service on that important committee. They do a lot of interesting regulatory work, which is vital to the town. So again, I want to thank Jim Hilliard for his service and wish him the best. All right. Don, did you?
Yes. In addition to wishing him the best, and I appreciated his service, this is an excellent time at the beginning of the meeting, instead of at the end, to put another pitch in. We're running short of the ZBA. This is a very important board. It affects the lives of a lot of people, and it also determines the conditions under which a 40B can happen. It also determines the conditions under which a forty B can happen, but variances for your own buildings. If anyone is interested in this, please step forward.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else for a public comment? There are none, I guess we have nothing on consent, excuse me, we have annual committee presentations and I see Board of Assessors is first. Is Richard, is that you?
Speaking. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers, I believe all of you have a copy of my report in your packet. But I would like to just highlight a couple of items first and foremost. I'd like to thank the members of the committee, Bruce Nightingale and Jay Kavanaugh for their service. I was with you last week on the classification hearing and we are still awaiting. Our state certification of our tax rate, that should be forthcoming at any time. Having said that, this time of year when I appear before you, I always seem to be the Grinch to have to announce that. Between Christmas and New Year's, we will most likely be receiving our next tax bills. And in that tax bill, you'll be seeing the new value for your property. And it's an opportunity for the taxpayers to look at their tax bills, to look at the value of their property. Which you can go to the Board of Assessors website and pull a copy of their field card. And they can see what the value of their property is and if they wish to challenge that value in any way. They must file an abatement application with the Board of Assessors. That is very specific when it comes to timing, you can only file that abatement between January first and February first. And it is very time sensitive, so please do so if you wish. I just want to highlight to some of our residents who may be watching tonight. We had to change this year and one of the options for some of the folks in town who are having difficulty with their tax bills. With the ongoing COVID pandemic, we know more and more are. There is an opportunity for those who meet certain criteria to be able to defer their taxes. This year a town meeting, I want to thank the. Town meeting voters who voted to reduce the interest on tax deferrals. It's not a compounded interest rate, it's a simple interest rate of five percent and that was reduced from eight percent. Due to current monetary policies. So it's a great opportunity for people to defer their taxes if they qualify. And eventually the town will get paid, so it's a great opportunity for folks to take a look at, we offer a number of programs that are available. Within hopefully a year or two, we will be bringing forth a new program, those facing hardship under the age of sixty. Town meeting also voted for us to file legislation. To allow this, it's not currently allowed by the state under the Department of Revenue, we are asking for a local option. To get it done and I think it will be very beneficial to a certain segment of taxpayers in town. So other than that, Mr. Chairman, my, I think it's an extensive report is on file and I would be happy to entertain any questions from the board.
Richard, I know you've stated this in the past, but. I believe you can appeal online, is that correct?
You must fill out an application and send to the town, we need to actually get a copy of that application for the abatement and the application. For the abatement is online, Larry, so you can send it. It's need to be sent to the board and needs to be postmarked no later than February first.
Thank you, Richard. Questions for for Richard? On the Board of Assessors. You're right, it was a detailed report, so if you missed anything, I believe it's probably all there, thanks again.
Thank you, I want to thank Mr. McManus, who was our liaison for his service as well. And again, feel free to reach out to us at any time with any questions, either myself, Mr. Nightingale, Mr. Kavanaugh, or of course, our very, very able staff at the assessing department.
Moving on then to Council on Aging and their committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know if you received a copy of that, it's not in the packet, I don't know.
We did have a, we have a copy of it, again, a very well-written report.
Thank you, very extensive and. Again, I will not read it, I know you've got an aggressive agenda tonight, but I would like to highlight a few things. First and foremost, I want to thank our members for being here, we see a number of our members on the Brady Bunch screen here this evening. Our Vice Chair Carol Fair, Ralph Smith, Joanne Lepore, Angie Chalaka, and of course. Our well-loved and very able Director Emily Mitchell, thank them all for being here this evening. For those who didn't see it, and I hope that it could be posted in the packet, so it's available to the residents of the community. First and foremost, I want to recognize a huge loss we had last year. You know, our Vice Chairman, who really in all instances was the Chairman of the Council on Aging, Lee Culver passed away. And Lee's service to our community, to the Council on Aging, to the Community Center was just incredible and. I know for one as Chair and he was Vice Chair at the time, his his leadership, his counsel and his passion for the Council on Aging. Were just a cornerstone of his service to this community and he is missed, he's terribly missed and but we know that he's with us every time that we meet. Just a couple of highlights, it's been a tough year and a huge kudos to our Director Emily Mitchell. Due to COVID, we had to really shut down a lot of our programs, a lot was happening at the Council on Aging. And I don't think that taxpayers and residents understand just how many of our older adults. Their families and their caretakers avail themselves to the services of the Council on Aging. And. Basically, this year it was an overhaul of operation and a huge kudos to Emily and to her staff. Who have been exceptional and currently we're short staffed because we had a. Our Social Services Coordinator left this year, who was wonderful, did a great job, Susan Keath. We have replaced her with a very, very capable member of our staff, Julie Weathers, who is a Program Specialist One. Who in all honesty has been working two jobs this year. That of Program Specialist and as the Social Services Coordinator, she's been doing an exceptional job. And here is where I need to give a shout out, not only to the members of the council, many, in fact, all of whom are volunteers. But people have stepped up to assist during this difficult time. We have a great luncheon program, that had to be suspended, and so we're sending lunches out to our community. And if you take a look at the report, you'll see some of the numbers of the programs that are still ongoing, not happening onsite. However, you know, midterm, we're able to do some onsite programming and it was one-on-one, it's under tremendous COVID restrictions. And we have done things like our podiatary care, our mobile dental hygiene clinic, our elder law attorneys, and of course, the town nurse wellness clinic. If you have never been to the Community Center by the Council on Aging on any giving given morning during the week. To see the people who are there, again, availing themselves to the services of the Council on Aging, you'll be blown away. You know, there are folks who come in and get their blood pressure taken pretty much every day. You know, and their only contact with other people is through the Council on Aging, through the town nurse, through the staff at Council on Aging. So they really do an exceptional job. The numbers are staggering, you know, and the one thing that did occur this year that hit us budget-wise. Is that we were no longer able to use a nonprofit status for our mailing. That is for our newsletter and I know most of you get a copy of that newsletter. That is also a lifeline to many of our older adults. At this point, I want to thank and do a shout out to the Friends of the Council on Aging and Jack Brown, the President. For stepping up to assist us with covering that postage next year. That's a necessary part of our budget and we will need that going forth because that newsletter is imperative to many of our older adults and their families. I mentioned our volunteers, we have well over ninety volunteers who are helping us. And one of the disappointments this year is that we had to suspend our volunteer recognition programs. We have a policy of recognizing our volunteers twice a year. First time is with our public safety, both fire and police, and we do normally a cookout for volunteers, very, very well attended. Great opportunity to say thank you, we also have a winter program, which again, we were very close to holding before things shut down this year. At a local restaurant and we weren't able to have that. But we need our volunteers to know if they are watching tonight and for those of our council members who do wonderful job volunteering, we do thank you. We could not do the work and Emily and her staff could not get the work done without your services. So at this point, I want to just give a shout out to Emily, again, her staff, Julie, Susan Giselle, the town nurse. Linda St Pierre, our town chef, who has been working diligently getting these meals out for our seniors. Marie Carlson, our executive assistant, and of course, our very, very dedicated van drivers, who are still working, you still see our vans out in the road. The spacing is far different and the number of people that we can carry at this time is far different, but still serving the needs of this community. Finally, I want to thank Mr. Don Howell, our Selectmen Liaison, for always being available when we need him. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, I would complete my report and ask if there are any questions, Emily is also available to assist with any questions as well.
Questions, comments? Well, they comment, they do a great job, thanks, thanks to everybody. I'm. I'm amazed, I mentioned this to Ralph just before our meeting started officially, is. How your whole committee and activity basically turned on a dime. And did all the things in your reports, it sounds like you could do so much so quickly. A great job, I also would comment that. Just a number of people that have joined you tonight, Richard, from your committee, shows how passionate everyone is to take the time to do this. My hat's off to you and your committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will do one final plea, we have one open. Spot on the Council on Aging and we have an alternate member Lieutenant Justin White from the Harwich Fire Department. And I would ask that at some point that you agenda, having him appointed as a full-time member of our council. We're very, very fortunate to have a member of the Harwich Fire Department on the Council on Aging. And finally, when it talks to our staff, I give kudos to Mr. Powers for and previous town administrators for choosing Emily Mitchell as our Council on Aging Director. And for promoting Julie Weathers as our our new Social Services Coordinator. And finally, a shout out to the right, I've got the best committee in town on the Council on Aging and I'm very, very blessed to have them, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You brought this up at a good time because we do have our interview committee, both Don and Ed on this meeting, so I'm sure they'll take up the, Don? They'll take up you, please.
Larry.
Yes, Ed.
Also, the Council on Aging does great work and as Richard's mentioned, they have good partners. And the Friends of the Council on Aging and I know that. That organization is also could use a few more hands pulling on the oars to keep things running.
Good point, thank you, Ed. Next we go to Board of Health, Pam?
Hi, good evening.
You're muted, Pam.
Okay, thank you. Thank the Board of Selectmen for giving us the opportunity to meet with you tonight. In particular, we want to thank our liaison Larry Valentine for being a steady presence at our meetings. All board members have been sworn in and have taken their state ethics course. And there have been no recurrent absences and only a couple of excused absences. All meetings are posted and advertised in accordance with the Open Meeting Law and meeting minutes are voted and available to the public for past meetings. Online as well as in hard copy at the Health Department. Has been one of the most challenging years for the Board of Health. While this year began rather routinely, it became. Mired with dealing with COVID nineteen and governmental efforts to slow down its spread. While much of the guidance was coming directly from the Governor's Office coordinating and implementing it all as well as making sure the public received accurate information. Fell to Megan Eldridge, the Health Director. As related to COVID, much of our focus on the board involved working in conjunction with her. Many decisions ensued about appropriate safety orders for public places. We did vote on an emergency order for facial coverings along Route twenty eight between Bank Street and Lower County Road. We met to review and vote an implementation of mandatory workplace safety standards training manual. Even with so many things going on almost daily, we were able to step back and assess the complementary but separate roles of the Board of Health. In the policy arena and the Health Director implementing policy and guiding the day-to-day activities of the Health Department. That has strengthened us during this crisis and will certainly help us, we hopefully finally put COVID nineteen behind us. But even with all the things related to COVID going on, other important business was addressed. The board met with representatives of Protectarc, Cape Cod, Aquafire or Polka to receive a presentation regarding. Glyphosate, a chemical found in Roundup as well as other weed-killing products. We discussed the request to ban its use from town-owned lands. Out of this, we reviewed a draft of the Town of Harwich Nutrient and Pesticide Control Bylaw as well as education efforts. Which might be undertaken with the general public. We held a discussion to adopt Massachusetts Safety Standards for Restaurants and incorporate them into the. Harwich Board of Health Food Service Regulations. We reviewed the fiscal year twenty one VNA contact contract. We performed a review of the Harwich Public and Semi Public Bathing Beaches. Going over testing frequency results and performing a regulatory review. We had discussions on Health Department staffing levels and duties leading to a budget request for additional staff and some changes to job descriptions. We adopted a Board of Health mission statement. And we reviewed and adopted an amended Board of Health definition of a bedroom. Some stats, twelve properties requested variances from Title Five, three environmental impact reports were reviewed. Two properties requested reconsideration of previous orders of conditions. One public bathing beach requesting requested a sampling variance. A review of a food service seating plan was done for a new food establishment. A request was heard to transfer an existing retail tobacco permit to an adult-only tobacco permit. One extension request was heard to extend a Board of Health condition regarding tobacco permit conditions. A tobacco fine hearing was held, a food service suspension hearing was held. A waiver was requested to use septic system until the sewer is available. A show cause hearing was held regarding a failed septic. And the Health Director. Megan Eldridge provided COVID nineteen updates at every meeting since March of this year. At this time, I would like to recognize the efforts of the town's dedicated Health Department staff who work daily to keep us safe, especially now. They are Megan Eldridge, our Health Director, Kathleen O'Neil, our Senior Health Agent. Jerry Leonard, our part-time Health Inspector, Jennifer Clark, our Department's Executive Assistant. And we wish our now-retired part-time Health Inspector all the best. As well, thanks to the other members who make up the Board of Health. Sharon Flagler, who MS, our Vice Chair. Rhonda Galglio, DMD, Matt Antoine EMS. And our newest member Kevin Dupont RN. I also wish to recognize Matthew Cushing MD for his service and wish him well in his future endeavors. In closing, it remains an honor to serve the Town of Harwich. Respectively submitted Pamela Arhow RN, Harwich Board of Health Chair.
Thank you, Pam. Very good report, any comments, questions, Don?
Yeah, I had a couple of pages of questions, but I seem to have misplaced them, Larry, I'll take it up for there later.
Yeah, I think that. You're a testament to how much. Our committees, you're a good example of this, have been able to get done during this lockdown, during this pandemic. Just a list of activities that in the functions you accomplished is a testament to you and our town staff. I also, my bias is is that, you know, Megan gives a report, he works through the Board of Health. And with due respect to the Governor. These guidance wouldn't get that very, wouldn't get that far if it weren't for the. Expert aid and direction of our local Health Board of Health and Health Directors. So my hat's off to you, all of you for going, marching us through this. Trouble time.
Thank you.
Megan cited. It sounds as if you're going to defend yourself, but we'll move on.
I just turned a little red. Thank you, Pam. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
We have, thanks again, and we'll move on. We have nothing in the consent agenda this evening. So Joe, we'll move to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll see, there's all various types of licenses coming up for renewal. And we would start right out with the first, first one, now that I've said that, is actually an application for a new inholders license. So these are done typically seasonally, but this one is a change of owner. And they need, if they're going to get the license, they need that for their closing process.
Larry?
Okay. Michael, please.
Larry, I move that we approve the new seasonal inholders license for On the Harbor LLC, DBA Allen Harbor Inn, 326 Lower County Road.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, that will take a roll call. Steve?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So, Joe, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item under B is renewal of two. Chapter 138, Section 12, which is restaurant on-premise liquor renewals. First one is for Brax Restaurant Management, doing businesses Brax Landing for all alcohol. The second one is Harwich Inn and Tavern, doing businesses Harwich Inn and Tavern, all alcohol.
Larry?
Yes, Michael.
Larry, if, if I can, I'd like to just make motions right after the vote for, for B, C, and D. And I'll start with B, and I'm going to start with a question I asked last week, and I'm going to ask a question of Joe. Is, is, are any of these listed? Did any of them have a hearing schedule for any alleged violations on the licenses?
With regard to item B, one and two, no.
Okay. With that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve MGL Chapter 138, Section 12, Annual On-Premise Liquor License Renewals, one and two, as listed in the packet.
Second.
Discussion? Now I'll take a roll call. I'll start this time. I'm an I. Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Don?
I already said it.
Steve?
Steve? Hi.
You don't get to vote twice, Don, so we'll move on. Joe, unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Larry?
Sorry.
Larry, if I may, I'd make a motion on C.
Please, go ahead.
I move that we approve annual common viculars license renewals, one through five, as listed in the packet.
Second.
Discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So those are unanimous. Michael, you want to move on to D?
I do. I make a motion that we approve the annual auto license renewals, number one through number 12, as listed in the packet.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to point out a scriveness error on item number 12. It reads as Class UV Auto Repairman. As you'll see from their application, that would be Class IV, or Roman numeral four, for auto repairman.
Okay.
So it's correct in your package.
Your motion?
Absolutely.
And Don, the second as well? Other discussion? Take a roll call. Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So we move on then to 13.
Larry, I'm going to make a motion on 13. I moved that, I moved that we approve Section 1.07 of the Harwich Board of Selectmen Liquor License Regulations Request for Closure by Licensed Establishments, A through C, as listed in the packet.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just want to state, as you'll see for the record, these establishments are all seeking temporary closure due to the impacts of COVID-19.
Thanks for the, for the information, Joe. Other discussion? If not, I'll, I'll take a roll call. Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So we're now down to item E, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In a moment, I'll turn it over to the Water and Wastewater Superintendent. But as the board recalls, based on your special meeting last Tuesday, December 8, there are really the next five items on your agenda. Items E through I are offshoots of the original discussion that the board initiated last week. In some instances, we'd be looking for discussion leading to possible vote. In other cases, there are updates and in some, one case, there's merely a discussion. And the first matter, this relates to the sewer CAD modeling that, the, the process that the Water, Wastewater Superintendent spoke to last week. So, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Pelletier, our Water, Wastewater Superintendent, for his presentation.
Dan, floor is yours.
Good evening. So we had discussed this last week at the wastewater presentation. And I believe there was a desire to have a continued discussion about wanting to move forward with the sewer CAD modeling contract. So Joe advised me that this would be a topic on today's agenda. And I wanted to, really, this is, this is an introduction to see if the board wants to pursue it. And with that, we would then seek to find suitable funding for that. So.
Okay. Did you want to just, I see Russ, you're on the line as well. You want, want to walk us through this again?
Sure. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Great, great. So the, the purpose of this agreement was to develop a townwide sewer CAD model for the Town of Harwich. We gave a demonstration a few weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago, about a small area kind of in Harwich Center where we did a sewer CAD model to develop some conceptual costs. But this would be to expand that model. I do have the, the Google Earth up. I can share screens if anybody would like to, a quick recap of it. If not, that's fine too. But what we'd look to do with the townwide sewer model is to model all the proposed areas of expansion. And through that model, the information we gain is fairly substantial, one of which being the conceptual design information, which will give us the inverts, the depths, the locations of pump stations, things like that. So the town can plan future projects accordingly. I believe Dan's going to be talking about a water project coming up with the potential for some cost savings. If you can combine utilities, so this model will give us the information that we need to take a look at that. We also create a GIS database with this model. It's, it's part of how it's developed. We develop a tool for the existing sewer that's been put in place. It's very effective for modeling impacts of future flows, whether it's one gallon or something above that. It can very efficiently model the flows and look at impacts to the system. So it's a multi-beneficial model. I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'll answer any questions or more than happy to give another quick demonstration.
Thank you, Russ. Let me just comment. I wanted to bring this back because we have, we brought it up in our special Board Select was being last Tuesday. And we have some serious decisions going forward and actually very expensive decisions. And I think we should have as much data and be factually correct when we make those decisions. We've already seen cases where flow rates have changed when we get better data, when we can mark that in. And those are all critical to beating our CWMP goals, but do it as cost-effectively as possible. So that's what this is about. I'll ask for any other questions? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if it helps the board, not anticipating what the board would want to consider this evening. We had it listed as a discussion and possible vote. I do know that you can see there a draft agreement between the town and GHD. However, I'm not prepared to make a final recommendation as we're still trying to ascertain what level of appropriation is available if the board were interested. Rather, I think what we're looking this evening is a sense from the board if, if there's an agreement of the necessity of modeling, sewer CAD modeling to create the data that you've talked about. So we have our wastewater superintendent, town engineer, finance director and myself. We've met on this regularly. We're prepared to speak to the merits, but really wanted the board to engage in a discussion if this is an appropriate next step to take.
Thank you, Joe. As you mentioned earlier, that point is pretty much covers all our points tonight. This is a broader discussion that we want to, we're starting with in detail tonight, Bill, continue for some time. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Larry. I saw it the last meeting, but I, I get the impression talking with people that that was not the most viewed meeting we've ever had. And this is a really important subject. I think it's important for the public to understand that heretofore, we put all of our eggs in CDM Smith's basket. Whatever it was that they were saying and the sequencing they were recommending, and even the estimating they were doing. It was all one-stop shopping. That's how we were proceeding. This is a serious way to dive down into data and help us guide, I mean, apparently some of what they're already initially showing is that there isn't the compelling need to do some of the things that were already on the radar screen, might be allow us to resequence or reduce some of what we're doing. I mean, I personally would rather spend $150,000 on doing this than $15 million of just throwing darts against the wall.
Thank you, Don. Other comments?
Larry?
Was it Steve?
Ed.
Ed, sorry.
Yes, I'd be very interested in, in moving ahead with this project to gain more information from a very sort of small-scale example, when we were building, planning on building the high school. The initial plans developed by the designers and engineers was, was to put in a treatment facility. But we went ahead and got additional information, more site-specific information from our wastewater committee and CDM Smith. And we're able to relocate where the septic system and leach field was located, eliminating the need to put in that very expensive treatment facility and the annual cost of maintaining that treatment facility. And were it not for going out and getting the extra information, we would have not, not moved in that direction. So I think as much information as we can get to inform our decisions as we move forward is a very good thing.
Thank you, Larry. Steve?
Yeah, I, I would, I would be in agreement with both Don and, and Ed on this. I think from the presentation that these folks made a month ago, I guess it was, I was very impressed with, and I think it could be very useful and helpful to us in making these decisions going forward. I also wanted to say, apologize for missing the presentation on Tuesday, but the deck that Dan sent out was excellent and very helpful. So thank you, Dan, for that.
Michael?
Yeah, I would agree with everyone else as far as the importance and how relative, how, how good this would be for the town. But I do think we are getting a little ahead of ourselves. I guess I would like to understand where we're going to find the 150,000 and at what expense. I think for me, being in an agreement in the packet tonight without understanding a little bit more about where this would be paid for and whether or not we were going to bring it back before town meeting and, and even have the conversation on whether or not we're going to go out to bid on this. And if we're not, why we're not. And Russ, I, I don't mean that in any negative way. And I believe I know the answer, but the answer wasn't in the packet for the public. And as Don mentioned last, in his comments, it was not the most viewed meeting that we've ever had. There was no notice to the public really at all. And I think given the blunder, the $12 million plus blunder in East Harwich and the still unanswered questions, at least my questions of not, not fulfilling our deal with Chatham and not fulfilling our agreement with the taxpayers of the Town of Harwich for 600-plus homes to go to Chatham, something that we've already invested heavily in. I do feel like we are getting a little ahead of ourselves. And, and Russ's presentation for Harwich Center was outstanding. And based on what I took away from the meeting last week, if we do enter into a DHY agreement, if we get that far, that work's been done for the most part. So as important as it may be to continue to model the rest of the town at 150,000, I believe we need to get our ducks in a row and answer some of these questions before we even consider this.
Thank you, Michael. I think as Joe said, we'll need to bring this back on the funding, funding side. And the, you know, one of the things we, Dan mentioned last week is, is, is the scheduling of going forward. If you look at the schedule that was presented last week, we actually were talking about an article on completing the Pleasant Bay watershed, the homes you talked about, Michael. Bring that to an article this spring, and that's we'll discuss coming up. And I think the DHY, as it goes forward, the actual to meet their deadline, the design would be a couple of years from now, the construction would be three or four years from now. So we could, we can kind of schedule this in a logical way. But you are, are really correct. We need to have, the intent of this is to put full court press on getting all the information out there and have a, and have an open discussion. So we'll continue this. Michael, I agree with your point. We need more people to be aware of what's happening.
Larry, if I just could add to that?
Sure.
My takeaway from the meeting last week was not an article going before town meeting about finishing East Harwich. That was definitely not my takeaway. And I saw Dan's hand up, so I'm sure he's going to have an answer for that. As far as the, the money goes, and I said where we're going to find the money, because that for the past four years, we've, we've, we heard that an awful lot, not under the current administration, but the past. We often heard that we'll find the money. Based on the Board of Selectmen's budget message this year and how serious we were about that budget message, not only do I want to know where we're going to find the money, I want to know to what expense. Who are we taking it away from? Because I know the department heads right now are trying to figure out their budgets with increases. So if, if this, they only seem like 150,000, Larry, I think the timeline on what we're going to do is more important than mapping out the future at this point. So I'd like as much detail as I can get.
Yeah. Of course. And just one final comment, just to clarify. We as a board haven't decided any articles going to bring next year's spring meeting. I'm suggesting that's one we want to consider, is do we want to complete phase two or not? But we haven't taken any of those votes. Joe?
I see Selectmen Hall, like before I see.
Yeah, Larry, I just wanted to make a point because Michael brought up an interesting issue. And if, I want to leave this unsaid because I don't want to get the public to be thinking about, we're thinking more opportunities to sewer and more places. Actually, what this is, what I'm, my understanding of the CAD modeling was it's revisiting some of what we're doing too, to see whether it was even necessary to proceed on some of the things that we were doing and target some of the things that might be more important to be doing. So I get that, even in DHY, Michael, the, some of the figures that they used as a premise for our contribution are probably overstated to a certain degree. And I'm not sure, since we have to pay in proportion to what we contribute, that we're well-served unless we actually look that over and see what Since we have to pay in proportion to what we contribute, that we're well served unless we actually look that over and see what we really need to do.
Thank you, Don. Joel, did you have a comment?
Just to follow up, first, I want to echo what Selectman McCaskill had said about. The appropriation, funding and all of that, because as I mentioned, the group met this morning, the group, of course, is myself, the finance director. Water and wastewater superintendent and town engineer. We've been affecting these weekly meetings for the last three weeks, recognizing that the board was going to be, you know, accelerating your discussions. On a lot of wastewater type topics. We were given the directive to have materials present for this evening on this topic, middle, middle to late last week, so. The best we could get together is what you have in the packet today. However, since we've met, we did discuss, and and if I may say, I had the same comment to the group that Selectman McCaskill just made. In that, given that we're in a difficult budget time right now, where is the appropriation coming from? The reason why we don't have specifics this evening is because we are analyzing a previous appropriation related to the comprehensive. Wastewater management plan, and we believe that as it would come before the board anyway. But we believe that use is appropriate under the article. We're just trying to ascertain the available funds under that article. Otherwise, if we didn't have that funding through that article, we wouldn't necessarily be going forward on this. And would have that conversation with the board. Because the appropriation is critical and we wouldn't be looking to take it away from any of the departments, given the stress they're already under. And then with regard to the procurement, as the board may recall. GHD was brought to the town by a qualifications based selection process. That I had asked the town engineer and the wastewater superintendent to go through last spring. They evaluated a number of engineering firms, and as you may recall, engineering services contracts are exempt under thirty B. The inspector general's office recommends that you consider an RFP process, but we took it to the next level and did a qualifications. Based selection process that brought GHD to the town of Harwich. Now we're looking to expand upon that original request for modeling. So all of that would be reduced to writing when it's appropriate to come before the board for an actual procurement request. Again, I feel I've gotten, I feel we've gotten some sentiment from the board. But there is some material that we still have to pull together to bring to the board.
Thank you, Joe. Other comments? Let me, let me suggest that. Sandy, you wish you or? Pardon, we had Dan?
Just one, I just wanted to add one more note to the sewer CAD model. We talked last week during the presentation about the potential to re-phase the CWMP in the way that we're structuring our construction contracts. Into more frequent and smaller construction contracts. So, you know, the sewer CAD model would give us the information, you know, would provide existing conditions. As well as outphases in in East Harwich and other places that would allow us to do that, go through that exercise. So just that there was value, I guess, outside of DHY.
Let me, let me suggest that, you know, we've put a lot of material into nice agenda because we wanted, I know I wanted to, and Joe and I talked about. I want to get out, get as much out there as we can. That's, I should, that's just, my suggestion is we schedule a meeting. You know, say the first week in January or coming back, so it's well publicized and talk about all these as one dedicated meeting. Not our regular Monday night meeting. So we can go through these, these documents, the information in more detail. And it'll also give us a chance to, for y'all to read them and formulate questions and. So we have a more productive meeting. But I did want to get it out there, want to get the information to the public as soon as we. So everyone's aware of it. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, just following on that comment, if the board is agreeable to do another dedicated meeting. Perhaps we could come up with a date this evening so that we don't fall into the same criticism for the last dedicated meeting that we give as much notice as possible. It's one of my topics this evening under TA's report was the schedule around the holidays. I would recommend that the board still plan on meeting on January third, which follows the holidays. And if that's agreeable, we could also shoot for January fourth, the next night for that dedicated meeting. If the board's willing to commit this evening to a dedicated night.
I think actually the days are the fourth and fifth when I.
Sorry, thank you. The first Monday and Tuesday in January.
Look for your comments on that.
Many other towns have had lots of discussions already going into this. I think it's really important. Because I'm with Michael on this, we're spending more money on those meeting, on the subjects of those meetings than we are on the subject of even the town meeting warrant. As we go down the road, really difficult subjects to talk about within the context of our regular Monday agenda. And even DHY, that's going to fall into several different things, not just the need for what we need to do, but the construct of how it's going to be managed and what we're accepting. To get into that. So it's just way too complex to give it fifteen minutes on a Monday night. But Michael's right, it's like what happens if you hold a party and no one comes? So that kind of felt like last week was held in. Without the public fully engaged.
So you're, you're agreeing with January fifth as a focus meeting?
Yeah, and we really need to make an all out effort to make sure that everybody knows that we're doing that so that they can participate in.
Okay, others? Go ahead, Michael.
Larry, I'd suggest that we push it up one more week and I'd suggest that we advertise it as a public hearing. And try and see what the public wants, not necessarily what we want. And I'm not sure that that's possible. I'm not sure how many people are going to attend the Zoom meeting. Which, you know, quite frankly, I think based on the pandemic and where we are. And shutdowns and not having people in our room, that it's the best time to be making all these important decisions. But the more time we give the public and the paper to pick it up, the better. And and an actual agenda that we can advertise sooner rather than later on directions that we may or may not be going, but. As much information as we can give them, and I think that there's still a fair amount that this board needs to. Agree on and more information put forward to us before we have a public hearing, but. I think the later we do it, the better and the more advertising that we do, the better to get as many people as possible.
You want to move it to the. Well, the fifth will give us, that's what, three weeks?
How many, how many are there in between? That's, I guess that's my question. How much are we going to discuss this in the next two, three weeks or two, three meetings?
But Larry?
Yes, Ed.
It gives us three weeks, but they're, they're, they're not the most settled three weeks in our, in our lives. If we did advertise it in the paper or whatnot, I venture to say that a lot of people would probably miss it because they're busy doing other things. So I think moving that date back a week certainly would make sense to. The eleventh and twelfth in January. But that meeting is is the beginning, I think, of. Of us gathering more information, both us. The Board of Selectmen and us, the citizens of Harwich. And I think we need to do that over maybe several meetings before we actually. Go to a public hearing to. Take testimony or or comments about what it is we want to do. If we start deciding what we want to do before we get. Enough information to really understand what it is. And what the parameters are, I think. It's not necessarily the best use of our time.
Totally agree.
I certainly agree, it's multiple meetings. The question I still have is, do we, so we, your suggestion, we start those on the twelfth and then have multiple meetings following that?
Yeah. And I'm, you know, I don't really have a sense of how many meetings we, we have, I think you and. Joe and Dan and others can sort of figure out what the subject matter, what it. Breaks down into into different packets for us to look at and how many meetings it would take to cover that. And but, you know, and I'm fully confident you can do that, but we need to move through that information before we start. Committing. To go in one direction or another.
Joel, let me, let me ask you, Joe, on if we choose to take anything to town meeting, what's our drop dead date on that?
So you're really talking about. The, the end of January and then early February as far as charter mandates on budgets and articles and all of that.
Okay, so we have, we have, we do the twelfth, we have like three or four weeks to hold these and make a decision.
Larry, you can put placeholders in, you can always take an article out. You just can't put one in after a certain period of time.
Okay, Steve, I'm sorry, did you, did I cut you off?
No, no, I just said that I was in agreement with what Ed had just said.
Okay, so is a consensus to move ahead on the twelfth?
As the first of a number.
Pardon, Don?
I didn't catch that comment.
As the first of a number of meetings.
Yes.
Exactly. Yes, certainly more than one, yeah. Any other discussion? Sandy and did you folks have something to comment on?
I requested to comment on the DHY conversation and it's relevant to this, but I don't know if this is the one I. Sign up for.
Okay, you can go, we'll wait and come back with the DHY. It looks like we're going to have. A lot of discussion on any of these nights anyway. We'll just continue the discussion going forward, but we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Joel, does that give you and Dan and I see Carol's on the line, she was at least, but yeah, Carol's on the line as well. So we'll shoot to. For a special meeting on the fifteenth of January.
And we're going to treat it in the same manner as a public hearing?
Yes.
And then what were the specific topics that you would want us to notice the public on?
Well, let me. I think pretty much you have it covered. It's a nice agenda, these same topics, but let me. Let me ask each board member to get back to if they have some more. Michael has more detailed questions he wants to be sure they responded to. Let me, if Joe, you can hold on that and get some, just get some response.
Sure.
Back from the other board members.
Yep, but we'll put aside the date on the twelfth for that special meeting.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we're going to progress on the agenda, I would defer to the wastewater superintendent. As to what he thinks would be the status of item F regarding instructing staff to pursue cost saving and sharing.
Dan?
Larry, before Dan starts, can I just, can we rewind just a second?
Sure.
Back to Joe's ask. Joe, I had several questions in the last meeting and I believe Dan Pelletier has gathered some of those answers. My schedule didn't allow for a conversation today. However, as we talked about tonight, the hundred and fifty thousand, I don't think that our message. I'll only speak for myself, is for staff to sit on any findings until the twelfth. So if there's, if you come back to us with the funding mechanism for the hundred and fifty thousand, let's not pile everything on for the twelfth. Let's have that next meeting if that's available, not not necessarily for a vote, because I think the public should weigh in on that. But but so that the board can digest it. As I looked through tonight's packet and read the godly amount of information on electricity rates. As much as we can avoid piling on all of this information into one meeting, I think that would be helpful for me anyway.
Understood, thank you.
Michael, excellent, excellent point. I think we'd all want you to share the information with us as you get it. So we can read it and keep up on it. And Michael, don't bring up the, don't bring up the electrical contractor again, it's, I can't.
You know, though, one of the. Things that occurs to me that there, there is the question we had tonight of the. This, the hundred fifty thousand dollars for the CAD. What do you call it? The CAD? CAD modeling of the town. But in, and and what we also, the other question is sort of which way to progress, but it occurs to me that. In some, some ways. A lot of our decisions on which way to progress will be dependent on whether or not we, what sort of information we have. And if we wait to decide which way we're going to progress before we decide whether to do the CAD modeling. We will sort of be getting that information in our process late. To be part of the consideration to inform us on which directions and and what decisions to make.
I think Ed and if. If Joe and if we look at the funding mechanism, there's possibility we could bring that part sooner, bring that back sooner.
I would hope we would.
That was my point. My point was let's not wait for that until the twelfth.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, okay, good. Okay, Dan, Michael, you okay now? We'll move on. So, Dan, F?
Yeah, so we're actively searching now for funds and and we'll be getting that back to you hopefully as soon as we can. But with respect to the next item. The instruct town staff to pursue cost saving and sharing opportunities. I got a phone call today from the DPW director who was in a phone call or a meeting with DOT and they're asking about. The mass DOT project to pave Route twenty eight. It's a. It's, it's, so that's one opportunity as well as for FY twenty one town meeting, the water department has an article. On deck for replacing water main on Route twenty eight. Now, this would be really the first instruction to pursue those two opportunities. To which I would work and be in communication with MassDOT to to see what we need to do to be a part of that project. And then also bring this to the Water Wastewater Commission for consideration, because if we're going to. Consider making this a combined utility project, the realist, you know, in reality, it would likely push off the water department project. Because of the design with what happens with DHY, all these other decisions that need to be make, likely are going to be coming right up to town meeting. So I'm really looking for a consensus as to which direction you want me to go with what we, information we have now and then. I guess I would be coming back as new information presents.
Questions for Dan. Dan, I'm not quite sure I followed everything, everything you said. You have an opportunity to work with DOT to help, they'll help pay us to do the utility work?
My apologies, I took for granted that most of us were on the call last weekend or last week. So there's a mass DOT project slated for twenty twenty four that involves paving from the Dennis Town Line to the Heron River Bridge.
Alright, okay.
Town can be a non-participating entity and have sewer mains installed as part of that project. However, we have to get in now in the planning phase. Now with DHY and the uncertainty of which direction we're heading in, we wouldn't want to pursue. Putting sewer mains in there if we're not going to be there for forty years because we're going to do other parts of town. So it's really trying to determine if this is a good step that we should be pursuing now. Or if we should not be pursuing it. And the same is true with the water department project. We are in need of replacing that water main. It's been problematic for several years and on our plan for some time now. So we would like to do the project and if there's a desire to make that a combined utility project, there'd be considerable savings. there'd be considerable savings for the town to do so.
And that would completely, that would completely change what we've been looking at now in terms of Harwich Center in that area, what you're saying.
No, not, not completely. So the Water Department project travels from Lower County Road over to the Heron River Bridge. And the Harwich Center Southeast and Southwest components were along Route 28 in that same area. So if we did a combined utility project for that section of 28 receiving both water and sewer mains, we would, you know, save on the restoration costs by doing them both at one time for.
And that would allow us into sewer Harwich port.
Correct. That would be in line with what we had presented for D H Y.
Okay.
What's involved?
Yes, Michael.
Go ahead. Ed was, Ed was before me.
What's involved in investigating with MassDOT participating?
So I'm going to have to follow up with our DPW director tomorrow to see where the conversation went. But I received a phone call from him this afternoon as he was in a meeting with MassDOT to discuss that project. And he was calling to ask about the water main. And I said at the time, if you wouldn't mind mentioning that we, there's potential for sewer there. So if you could throw a placeholder into the conversation, should we decide to go that direction, we continue the conversations. So I think at this point, I would be following up with Link and seeing where they left off and then picking up from there.
What, what would be the timing if you were choosing to move forward?
So MassDOT is presently scheduled to do that project in 2024. So they're in the design phase now. It's, as I understand it, a fairly lengthy design process for a state road project, especially when we add in non-participant utilities.
Okay, Michael?
All right, Dan, thank you, and thank you for continuing to follow up on this and make some, some sense of some of this for me. As far as I'm concerned, you can pursue saving the town of money anytime you want. As you heard earlier, though, this, this board isn't in any position at all to make a decision yet. So if you need us to give you a consensus that that's the direction that we're heading tonight, I'm certainly a no, but I don't think that that's what you're asking for. This isn't new. The town of Orleans voted at town meeting to spend X amount of dollars putting pipes in the ground in an area that they were not going to sewer for five to seven years or 13 years it might have been. But anyway, they voted to put pipes in the ground because it made sense. So I would like you to try and make sense of this for us and give us some projections based on time. And I believe that some of this area is some of the work that, that Russ has already done. So I don't think you're going to be duplicating a lot of work. But I guess the question would be to Larry and to, through Joe, is does it make sense for him to spend some time on this and give us a presentation? Because certainly if we can save $5 million on paving by putting some pipes in the ground ahead of time, if this is an area that we are eventually going to sewer, then sure, that makes a lot of sense. I guess depending on what else we put before the voters. But you have my consensus to save us money and to spend some time on this. But I guess that depends on what other projects the boss has you on.
And if I may, I don't mean to make a PR pitch, but part of, part of these, you know, cost-saving and cost-sharing opportunities is partly why I'm advocating for, for doing small, more smaller, more frequent, you know, construction projects so that we can be more effective in the way we spend our money, the taxpayers' money.
So Dan and Joe, I take it at this point, you don't, we don't need to make a decision. We just need to tell them that we're interested. Joel, you, where are you on this?
I was just looking for Dan's thumbs up, so I take that as that's correct.
Is there any objection for
Larry?
Asking Dan to, Steve?
No, that was Ed.
Ed, I'm sorry, I can't, you guys sound too much alike.
I don't have, along with Mike, I don't have any objection to any of our town staff looking at, looking into ways to save us money. But I guess the other, the, the other side of this with the state going ahead for doing Route 28 in potentially 2024, if they do it and we didn't, and we don't move ahead, and especially with our water mains, if they completely fail, you get significant penalties of trying to reopen a road that MassDOT has just redone, as I understand it. And that would be potentially a horrendous cost to us at that point.
Yeah, because in fact, you're not supposed to reopen for at least five years, so.
You know.
Yeah.
I don't think, you know, at this point, putting, putting off a water main project for nine years is probably a good bet.
Okay, I guess. Have we given you enough?
Yeah, I think there was someone trying to speak.
Nope.
I would only add, Larry, that if we, if we did this in conjunction with the Water Department, that the Water Department could pay for this out of retained earnings.
I'm, I like that, but I'm not sure Dan is, I'm not sure.
You'd have to talk to the boards.
Unfortunately, Michael's delays onto the board, so there you go. All right, well, Will, Dan, I think we've answered your question, and Joel, and we'll move ahead and tell them we're interested.
Thank you for that, and I misspoke earlier when I said items E through I were all wastewater. It's snuck in the middle there as a request from last week's meeting is an update from our treasurer-collector on current tax collection rate. She was able to share some information. It was too late to put it in the packet, but I'll put it up here. And, and I know our treasurer-collector is on the line to speak to that question of where we are with current collection rates.
Amy?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. All right, so you guys can see that document there. Just put together a brief synopsis of where we're standing with the tax lien situation right now. Michael had requested that I remove the owners unknown, and I also removed unknown locations, because neither one of those categories are really very viable as far as collections, which leaves a balance due of 882,594,000. So I looked over the past 10 years of takings, and out of 294 properties, 201 of those have been redeemed, and the remaining 93 make up just under 64% of the 882,000 at 564. Current collections for this year on FY21 taxes, down about 6% from where our 2020s were at the same time last year. And there are 98 FY2020 bills that are still unpaid. I did send letters out on those in, in August, at the end of August, 205 letters, and we got 105 payoffs. So we will be pursuing those in tax lien after the holidays. Let's see. Attorney Bloom that we had been working with, she has stepped back from daily operations, so we're working with an associate now. And they have 14 open cases and 10 filed in land court. And we have added $52,753 of their fees to tax lien bills, and about half of that's been paid off. So those, I think that is a good relationship there. I think it is being productive. So any questions?
Questions? Michael, did that help?
Very helpful. Amy, thank you, and Carol, if you're on the line, thank you for answering my call this week and getting those questions through. I'd like to bring this back. I think that information was very, very helpful, and I think it clears up some of the angst with some people with taking a million dollars of it off the table, because it's owners unknown. And, and I know the Finance Committee Chair, John, I know that this is some information that he had requested and wants posted on the website, but we can get into that. So I would like to bring this back to have the conversation with the board and real estate and open space, as well as probably counsel. But as we look at owners unknown, you know, there's one case, I had asked about a month ago for an update on the sand pit in East Harwich that had been being pieced together and that we had an attorney working on, because not all of the lots owned in that sand pit were owned by one person, yet the sand pit's been leased. And as far as I know, Amy, and maybe you don't know either, I don't think we're collecting any taxes out there. I believe that that is being pieced together and ultimately will be a solar field, as I, as I brought up before. A second one that's come to my attention is, you know, a person from another town proposed a 100-unit subdivision, not properly, thank you, Joe, for taking care of that. But rumor has it that, that most of that land, taxes haven't been paid on. And it's my understanding that people are sitting on large parcels of land, and until they figure out what they're going to do with it, they don't bring it all forward, so they don't have to pay taxes on it. And then when they do bring it forward, they're only due to pay a certain percentage of the taxes or one year's worth of taxes, because it's still listed as owner unknown. And that's a terrible disservice to the taxpayers of the town of Harwich. And I don't think it's, it's just for the town of Harwich, I believe a lot of towns, or maybe it's even state law. But I do think that that's something that we need to work on as a board, because we are allowing people to piece together these pieces of land and then pay taxes right before they have a project and then sell them. And some will argue that it puts it back on the tax rolls. But given the wastewater credits that we could get on some of these larger tracts of land, this should be top priority for the board of selectmen. And, and we've been watching it for a long time. But $1 million of the $1.8 million not collected in taxes belongs to owners unknown and unknown parcels of land. And I think it's incumbent upon us to get that cleaned up, and the sooner the better. And I know that there's a lot of residents that would, that would dive into that. And Larry, given the math that's been presented to us for offsets, it really makes sense for us to make this a priority. And I think we only give real estate and open space $50,000 a year in a legal budget to work on this, and they're combating people that made a career out of doing this. So I would ask that sooner rather than later, and I know we have a lot of pressing things, but going into town meeting this year, it'd be good if we went in with a program that let us keep our land and made it a level playing field that people were paying taxes on right from when they get one little parcel of it. And I would, further by saying, I'd really like the information on the question asked a month ago relative to the sand pit and the solar, solar project. And now I would ask the board's support in understanding if that proposed 100-unit, the development that's been planned there, 12 homes, I believe maybe 10, has taxes been paid on that property yet? And if not, we need to take up why and how we're going to collect.
Thank you, Michael. Joel and Amy, I think that's some reasonable suggestions, have a, bring it back as a single item?
Are you looking for next week or early in January?
I think at this point, we're coming here in Christmas. I'd say the issue for the first week in January.
Joe, I'm fine with it based on schedule of other agenda items. We, we've been talking about this, Amy. Correct me if I'm wrong, for a few years now, so a few more weeks won't, won't kill us. But it needs to be top priority of the board, in my opinion.
Right. I think that we definitely need some legal involved in there, too, because title examinations and all that sort of thing, that's certainly not my expertise.
Oh, I would agree, because I've gotten mixed signals in the past, this comment that Michael made that we only collect the last one year. We've heard one year, we've actually heard three or four years. I'd like to get that clarified for me personally, but John, did you want to comment on that as well?
Talking to me, Larry?
Yes.
My only comment is, great job. Keep it up, Amy, and thanks, Michael, for your support. I think it's a great, a great initiative for the whole board to undertake.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Amy. We'll ask some further discussion on this then.
All righty. Thank you.
Joel, moving on to the next one.
Yeah, item H was an update by Selectman Howell regarding the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. And I don't think he's on.
Don, Don temporarily left, and so this, this move on to the, and see if he makes his way back to item I, which is the discussion of the D H Y draft agreement. And I'll just preface this, as I said before, that this is to get you some information out. I think we'll discuss this in more detail as we move into our January 11th meeting. But you have in front of you, and I, we take any, Joe, I'll turn to you, sir, if you want to walk through it. And I think Sandy, this is when you folks wanted to comment as well.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, what I'll say is that this is a draft that has gone through numerous changes of the D H Y subgroup. We've met monthly throughout pandemic remotely. The draft you have in your packet was the latest iteration dating back to August of 2020, and it was reflective of changes that Selectman Howell was looking to have added. I can tell you that the town of Dennis Board of Selectmen has endorsed the concept of the agreement and is planning an article for the adoption of that at their annual town meeting in May, excuse me, in late, early spring, there might be late April. The town of Yarmouth had a dedicated meeting last Thursday on this topic. And it's my understanding that the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen are scheduled to vote on the acceptance of the language and also to move forward on a spring 21 town meeting. And so really beyond Selectman Howell weighing in on the changes he was looking for, I, I would be at a disadvantage to explain the whole document. I do know that the D H Y subgroup is meeting this Friday, the 18th, and this is expected to be a topic of significant discussion.
Obviously, the hope is, is that if we move ahead, all three towns move ahead. And our portion is small. We're, we're, as the agreement now stands, we would be responsible for 14% of the capital costs of the, of the plant. But these will be discussions going forward, because the timeline is, is that we would, if we move forward, we would approve the concept, as Joel says, the actual commitment to the flow capacity in our plan. We come later, the following year. And was, I think, putting money forth to, for design in 22, 2022, and then construction in 24, which is interesting, because that would tie into what Dan presented on the, putting the sewer pipes in the ground. But I think, as Michael, you said, we're trying to figure out this, I think we need to figure out this overall schedule that we're somewhat comfortable with, and what we can do and what we can't do.
Larry, if I may?
Sure.
Unless, Joe, did you have your hand up?
No, adjusting my glasses. Thank you.
I'm just going to correct you, and sorry for that. You said our percentage of this is very small.
No, I said it was 14%.
Right, so percentage of the build, maybe small being 14%, but the overall picture for the town of Harwich is, I think, 80 million for this, this phase. 65 to 80, that was with 40-year overall cost.
No, that's, that's, let me just interrupt. You're right, because the major percent of the cost is what we're paying for the collection.
So to my, to my real statement is, it would be helpful, we, it's been a long time since we've had an update from the D H Y committee, which I believe is comprised of you, Don.
And Don.
Right, you, Don, and Joe, I think is involved in that as well, but we haven't had an update. So the version that's in the packet tonight, I'd like to understand what's changed from the last version. So if we could have highlighted changes or just a one page showing us what's actually changed, and then where we're still stuck. And I know Selectman Howell has been, there's been several things that he is kind And I know Selectman Howell has been, there's been several things that he has kind of dug his feet in on. So if we could get, rather than reading this entire document over and over again, looking for the one sentence change, could we get an update on what has changed? And it's not surprising to me at all that the town of Dennis voted to support this unanimously, since they are the hosts. And this is going to save them a pile of money. So it will be interesting to see what the town of Yarmouth votes.
Don?
Yeah, I'm finally back. I got kicked off.
Oh, thank you. We can, we'll certainly highlight changes. Don, you can speak. I think one of the issues you had was just to clearly identify the procurement process and
Well, there were several, Larry. Michael's right, when I entered the picture, it was a 2-2-1 construct with Yarmouth getting two representatives and Dennis getting two representatives and us getting one. And I was adamant that that would represent us being closed out on a super majority vote on anything. So it's got, that got changed to 2-2-3, which more protects us. And you're also correct that I was really, it's a theme I know Michael's been thinking of in other areas too. Where way too much stuff was being done just because it was an exempt class and people were choosing to not procure. And since the same names were coming up is in our system, like CDM Smith and John Giorgio is their lawyer too. I wanted to make sure that there was an arms-length distance and that they were committed. Whoever was sitting on a commission, if that's what the town chose to do. To making sure that, you know, that we're represented well and that the procurements are listed in the requirements that they have to get competitive procurements, not just optionally. And as you know, I've been extremely well received by the group and everybody loves me because I'm always getting along with everything.
But we can, Don and I can, we'll get together and highlight, Michael, changes in specific, so we can look at those. There hasn't been a lot of changes in the agreement, you know, some specifics that Don mentioned. But the theme was, it's been pretty, it's been pretty constant. This move, that's going to come back, so I think that's enough said on that tonight, and we'll bring it back. Quickly on the highlights. Don, can we go back to item?
Larry? Larry, the McLarkeys are still online, and this was the topic that they wanted to talk about?
Did you?
Yes, thank you. What I wanted to say about DHY is I'm concerned that, you know, 14% is small compared, and we may have options that Dennis and Yarmouth don't have because we're sort of on a different scale. And I've been very interested in the composting option and
We're getting feedback. Are you guys hearing that?
Before COVID, Sandy spoke on the phone with George Hugh Felder from Barnstable County Health Department. He is the expert about all the alternative things that could possibly work for us. And there are some very new emerging fast septic type things that might be viable. And and he really, everyone who really, really understands and studies this stuff in depth knows that composting toilets are the totally ecological, sensible best way for all involved to handle human waste. And so I would like to see that option presented, because I think it, a holistic view of our town's needs. So many times, the thing that truly helps the environment also helps our wallets, because it's simpler, it's cheaper, it's low technology and a local scale. Those things tend to actually be healthier, but of course, there's a lot of people out there who would like to make money and greenwash their products and market to them, market them to us, you know, we got to buy this, we got to buy that to take care of the environment. So I think this is another area that CDM Smith would never have promoted to us. Even if it was really viable, and I'd like to see it explored. And I know George is an expert, he is available to us. And as a town, we haven't heard the information he has to share. I'm concerned about contaminants of emerging concern and wastewater treatment plants concentrate those. I'm concerned about climate change. And this is an enormous energy expenditure, even if the price tag was affordable, of course, it's not. But the energy expenditure, the carbon emissions. Our biosolids, human waste, is like 50% or near 50% carbon. And I'm really fired up from this documentary I just finished watching called Kiss the Ground. It's been promoted lately and you could easily find it. It's all about how we can draw carbon down into the soil. And they had a little part on there about composting toilets, and they had this slogan, "The poop belongs in the loop." And I know this stuff may seem wacky to you if you are not familiar with any of it. But it's mainstream science, it's really, really, truly eco-friendly. And it would be so affordable compared to what we're talking about. So I'd like to see it explored. I'd like to hear from the experts, particularly George Hugh Felder. And have the town of Harwich aware of these options. People may decide they don't want to mess with those type of options. I know people would be really excited if the fast-acting septics were a possibility, because that's no change. You know, to what they're used to. And it would be so much cheaper, we could gradually switch over to those. I don't know if the modeling system that Dan has been working on might help us also to add to the information about whether or not these technologies are viable. But could we please explore them before we commit to this huge bureaucratic thing with Dennis and Yarmouth? Because they are, they probably don't have the options we have. We might have different options from them. And once we're tied into it, the economic changes to our community are going to be sad also. I'm really worried about those. So I hate to see people taxed out of town supposedly in the name of the environment when there are affordable environmental solutions. You know, that would preserve our community. Rather than changing our community into a place where people can develop more. People can, you know, chop down more trees and turn more forests into denser housing. You know, at the expense of all the people who have to leave town. That's all.
Yeah, you raised some interesting debate points tonight. And I would like to have a chance to debate with you on some of those. Because I, we've always looked, I think, as a combination of using the technologies you've mentioned when they're appropriate. And I think partly what we've learned is, I talked to George about this, which I had a lot of discussions with him as well. We've never thought that one size fits all. There's areas that we have more, hopefully you know, higher density, where sewers make sense, more rural areas gives you a chance to use more of the alternate technologies. You know, we have to be smart on doing that. You raised an interesting comment on emerging technologies, because actually sewer plants have both things going on and are better are more effective at reducing emerging, maybe the emerging chemicals and the other. You know, there's appropriate uses of each, because we have to be careful, we have to always look toward those to save money and make best use of our resources. But that'd be my only point. But we continue to look at those, but we have, I'm just saying we have to be careful of where they used. You know, Falmouth tried to use, they actually had town money to subsidize compost toilets. In my last discussion, I don't think they had any takers on that. And there's some, they might have had two. But there's some issues we have to resolve before we can get there, and one of them is we need the plumbing codes changed on older homes. So there's discussion going forward on it. But I do appreciate the comments.
I don't know if the public is aware of that discussion at all.
Maybe not. There's a lot out there if they just go Google anything. But we probably need to bring more back, you're right. Because otherwise, it does tend to in our somewhat political environment, we tend to be, look at one side versus the other. And it's actually, I think, a combination of activities we can do to, you know, protect our waters. Let me move on to, Don, did you want to give us an update on the Water Protection Fund?
So, Mr. Chairman, he was dropped again from the meeting.
Okay. I think we're done with the DHY discussion, and we'll let Don come back and we'll postpone this to another hearing of another meeting we need to. Joe, old business?
So, Mr. Chairman, the last item on the agenda under old business. This is an item that came in late Thursday afternoon. So I did ask Maggie Downey to present to the board. As you may recall, there were different efforts over the last year regarding RFPs and electric rates and all that, so at this point, I'd turn it over to Maggie to present to the board, and then there's an ask of the board to authorize someone to represent the town or participate. And it may, Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Howell may have just been in the meeting.
Yeah, I'm back on, though. I'm losing connections all over the place tonight.
Oh, sorry about that, Don. Don, you want to take a shout at the Water Protection Fund?
Yeah, that's going to take a much deeper dive in the future, but just briefly, at my behalf, actually, I asked Aaron Perry to have the commission send out that cover letter about how to apply, because it's a functional thing. We've been sitting for 14 months talking about creating the regulations with the five-member committee that I'm on. But now that we've nailed down the construct of what it is that's covered, how it is we're doing it, which I'll get to in a second. I've wanted to make sure that the community's got the information about how to apply this year if they were eligible. One thing that Joe noticed is that we're not listed by name there. And apparently, we hit just the wrong point, because there were people that already had projects in the works when the legislation was passed. And we got in towards the tail end of the eligibility for the State Revolving Fund. The SRF that everyone talks about. And that's what is an admission ticket into being able to be eligible for getting any funding from the county. So we, it took 14 months to come up with the draft regs that you got, which is what I think we should probably take more time to discuss. But in addition to that, I wouldn't read into it that we're not listed. Because there's going to be a mechanism to put us back in by vote of the board. The management board.
Okay. And that's, and I guess we'll leave it there, Don. That's the important point, because Don is arguing for it, and we really would like to get some financial help on the contracts you've already, are already out there.
We are indeed eligible, that much I found out. It's now a question of the functionality of how to do it.
And so I appreciate you working on that, because that's obviously would help us very much. Thank you, Don. Maggie and gang, sorry, we're going back a bit. We'll put you on the spot then.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maggie Downey, and I'm the administrator for the Cape Light Compact, and I have also been with me.
Maggie, are you on the, I'm sorry, you're not coming through very clearly. Are you on your computer or phone?
Computer.
I can't understand.
We're having a hard, we have some difficulty understanding you.
All right, I think Maggie just let me know she was going to call back in, and hopefully that will solve the audio issues.
Okay. So Austin, can you carry this now then?
Sure. So while we're waiting on Maggie, the reason that we're here tonight is to ask the town of Harwich how they would like to participate in the bid evaluation on Thursday, December 17th. As you are probably aware, the compact arranges for multiple municipal participants to put their electric load out to bid. So that we can get common terms and conditions that are protective of the towns and fix a generally multi-year flat rate, which the towns requested us to do about six contracts ago now to help with budgeting purposes, at least as far as electricity supply rates go. So every couple of years, we put together the load of the towns. Sorry. Every couple of years, we ask the towns if they would like to participate. We have about 40, we have exactly 40 participants this time around. Most of the towns on the Cape do participate. The town of Harwich authorized the Cape the Cape Light Compact to act as agent and putting the load out to bid, and bids are due on December 17th. So I think we have Maggie back. So Maggie, I don't know if you were able to hear me back and want to add.
You did a great job.
We can understand you now too, Maggie, so.
Sorry about that. Anyway, Austin, might you just finish your sentence?
So we are here to ask the town how they would like to participate in the bid evaluation. Generally, participants have two options. We welcome any participant who's available to send their authorized signatory to sign, evaluate the bids directly. So on Thursday, when bids are due, Compact staff, our legal counsel, and our power supply consultant will review the bids and make a recommendation, and then we will bring that recommendation via presentation to any of the authorized representatives from the participants who wish to sign directly. We understand that a lot of the town managers, who are usually the ones that are signing on behalf of the towns, are very busy folks. A lot of them authorize Maggie to sign on their behalf, but that is a town-level decision. And so what we're here to ask tonight is how the town plans to participate in the bid evaluation process.
Joe, I would look to you.
So it's the board's right to name somebody, and pass rounds, you had named me as interim administrator to participate. But it is a vote of the board.
Joe, I'm trying to remember, I think in the past, we've authorized the town administrator, but we might have had a selectman that joined as well, but I don't, can anyone help me out on that?
I believe in the past, and Maggie, if your recollection is different, let me know, but I believe in the past, it was the town administrator from Harwich who signed on behalf of the town.
That's certainly true. I'm trying to think if someone else joined in.
Over the years, we've had different, some of the selectmen have joined, and they're welcome to join this Thursday's process. It's quite educational and informational about energy markets. So because, you know, the upside of what we're, the world we live in is it's a Zoom meeting, so it's much easier to participate than if you were, you know, you have to actually physically come to the Cape Light Compact offices. So last time, I think it was just to have the, I sent you the contract that you, the current contract. I'm pretty sure the last time it was just Chris Clark and no town, no support for the selectmen. But there have been individual members, I want to say, and I thought Ed McManus might have been in one, but maybe I'm wrong. This is our seventh time.
So my question, does anyone care to join, Joe?
Larry?
Michael?
Larry, so is it just one ask? Tonight, I'm a little confused by the agenda item. We're really only authorizing someone to sign on our behalf, to review and sign on our behalf, correct?
Correct, for me, anyway.
So with that, I'd move that we authorize the interim town administrator to execute contracts with selected competitive electric suppliers on behalf of the town of Harwich.
Second, this is Don.
Thank you. Before I leave it, do any of you wish to, to join in discussion with Joe? That's resounding no. So if there's no other discussion, I'll, I'll take a vote. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So Joe will leave in your hands then to work out with the Cape Light.
Very good. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you, Maggie and Austin.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Joe, does that lead us into your town administrator's report? It certainly does. I'll try to be as expeditious as possible. First, a question to the board. Generally speaking, how do you want to handle the holiday schedule? We do have charter requirement items coming up next Monday, the 21st. My recommendation is that the board meet again on January 3rd, thereby eliminating the Monday between the holidays. And also some guidance from the board as to how the holiday eaves of December 24th and December 31st are handled.
Let me just confirm first. I know we have one member, is that going to be able to make it on the 21st? Steve won't be able to make that meeting. Will the rest of you be making some other quorum?
Larry, there, there is a chance that I won't be able to. I just put that out there.
Okay, okay.
I'll be available.
All right. Michael, you're available?
Yes.
All right. And Joe, your next question was the 24th and.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a standard practice on early release or anything like that on the Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
I believe we have to have standard practice on early release.
All right. Thank you. I didn't want to overstep my bounds. The board received information last week in answer to a question regarding, does the board have the right on a renewal of a liquor license to contemplate not renewing? So I just wanted to remind the board, you should have received that legal opinion. And I just want to say that the legal opinion concludes by saying that the, the board, sorry, I just lost it again. The board may consider evidence in determining whether or not to renew licenses. And the board may deny renewal applications if after conducting a public hearing, there is substantial evidence to support such a decision. So I did, this was a follow-up, did put that in your materials and look for direction from the board going forward on that. And the last item I had, I know there was a request for update on ATA search. As you know, the advertisement indicated that the first review would begin after the December 4th. I believe we have roughly 60 applicants. And I want to say that roughly a quarter of them on first pass have been vetted to meet qualifications. So I will continue with that process and update the board on next steps.
Thank you, Joe. Any, any questions for Joe?
I do. I asked that question and I didn't ask it lightly. We are, we are still waiting for dates on hearings for alleged violations.
Oh, yep. Sorry. Sorry. I do have an update on that one as well. Worked with a vendor to find the appropriate equipment to conduct what would be considered a closed circuit hearing. So working with counsel, who has reached out to witnesses, counsel for witnesses and is reaching out to the applicants. We have a date certain in early January to accomplish that. And it's been vetted through the health department so that even though we're in a stage where there is reduced activities, if you will, the plan that I have that I can roll out once I have confirmation next week, I can roll it out to the board. That should meet any and all concerns of any parties participating. So we do have a date in mind and we're just circling back with all the participants to make sure that date works.
A follow-up question. I know that there was some residents on at least one of the hearings that said to this board that they wanted to testify. Have they been reached out to yet?
So the testimony that they were talking about is not germane to the hearing matter. But based on the question that was asked last week, if the board were to conduct a renewal hearing, that would be the most appropriate time to have the residents and taxpayers to weigh in. It would have the most impact on that, that hearing process.
Okay. So I guess I would point to Larry on that one as the chair on whether or not we're going to have a renewal hearing for any business that has alleged violations, COVID, entertainment or alcohol. And I think that that's what you're saying, Joe. And probably can't get too into this tonight since it's not on the agenda.
Correct.
But I would ask that Larry and Joe at least have that conversation. And then that come back to the board. And then the last thing I would want to do, it would be to cause somebody not to be open by not reissuing the liquor licenses by the end of the calendar year. Are we putting anyone in jeopardy of being able to be open or not open?
I don't understand the question. Does that relate to the potential hearing?
So it relates to us having not renewed the license by the end of the calendar year. So my question is if we don't renew by the end of the calendar year, Joe, do they have to close their doors or not serve alcohol?
So the, the general concept is that they retain the license unless and until it is revoked by hearing. So in these instances, notice would be sent that the board is contemplating, you know, revocation and will give notice of a hearing. But until that's adjudicated, you can't take the property away from them. So they, it's my understanding that it would be allowed to continue operation until the conclusion of a determination.
Thank you.
So Joe, the sequences, they're independent actually then. We could schedule, doesn't matter which comes first.
I wouldn't necessarily say that. And, and, but what I'd like to do is follow up on what Selectman McCaskill said. And I've got a call scheduled for you and I with a counsel to go over all the particulars that you can then relay to the board.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
That said, Joe, we'll move to Selectman's reports. Ed?
Yes, Larry, I don't really have much to report. I just take this opportunity. Mike, we need to get together over our volunteer commitment from last week.
And I will reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Steve?
I've got nothing.
Michael?
Just one request and that's that the document that Amy provided tonight, be shared with the board. The Amy Tax Collector, the memo that she put together that you put on the screen, Joe.
Yeah, I apologize. I thought I sent. I did send that tonight and we'll also get it in the public packet.
Okay. But you sent it to our emails tonight?
Correct. Yep. It's two documents. Yep.
Thank you.
Don?
I don't have anything.
Okay. And I have nothing. So I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
You got a motion for Michael. Is there a second?
Second.
Take a roll call. I'm an aye. Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and have a very good.